Alright, preparing to livestream the meeting. Oh, admit. Welcome Northern Pride. Oh dear, okay.
Do you have a question Curtis? You're on mute, you have to unmute yourself.
Just looking where my hand is.
Oh. I thought you were waving to talk, so.
Did everyone have a quiet Easter?
Yup.
Well, there wasn't any like people from outside of my household, but there's nothing real quiet about my life these days.
We're good to go Jessica?
We should be good to go, the video link is working I believe. It is now posted on our website. I'm gonna mute myself.
Alright, good evening ladies and gentlemen. Seven o'clock is upon us, we'd like to call the meeting to order. In front of you, you have the agenda for tonight's regular council meeting. First one via Zoom conference in light of all what's going on. Does anyone have any additions to the agenda? Seeing none, looking for an approval of the agenda for tonight's meeting.
A motion approval of the agenda.
Okay Conrad, seconder. Curtis. All in favor? Opposed? Okay, let's carry. You also have the minutes of our last meeting on March the 23rd. Looking for an approval of the minutes. Glenn?
I shall move.
Seconder?
I'll second.
Okay.
Second by Ron, is there any error or corrections that need to be made? Seeing none, all in favor of? Opposed? Let's carry. Alright, business arising from the minutes. Sorry, bear with me here. Business rising from the minutes, seeing none. Moving on to city managers' report.
Thank you Mayor, there's just a couple of things that I wanted to note verbally. We have a COVID-19 survey that has been open since April 8th and it will be open until the 16th of April. The results of that survey will be shared with council as well as the MLA and MP for our area and the and any EMO. So far we've had 197 respondents and the vast majority have been from long-term residents of the community, so we'll have further results on that once that closes later this week. There has been a, the mayor has sat in on a number of conference calls, I'm sure he'll mention with the city mayor's caucus. All those city managers have been having a weekly conference call and just getting an idea for what each place is doing. It's rather apparent that there's a lot, there's a lot of changes for other places where they have larger departments and recreation area and those kind of things with their facilities being closed down, there are much larger numbers for layoffs and stuff. But other than that, we're working with the EMO group to to get going, they were out delivering packages today and we and we've met with each department and each department has been coming up with alternate ways to do their tasks if needed. Sorry about that, and we have set the vast majority of staff at City Hall up to work from home now. So that would be all for me.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to 2019 annual reports from our fire chief Mr. Neil Marsh, starting off with the annual building report. Just looking at the, at the numbers here. Seven more permits in 19 versus 2018. Everybody can read what it is, I'm not gonna read it over. Neil, if you'd like, I can pass this over to you if you have any comments on that and then we can move right into the annual fire report if you wish.
I'm sure, I guess the only thing, just looking at this the report, the second line, 2019 total permit value etc. Where it said three industrial projects, that should have said industrial and commercial, my apologies for the omission there. Okay.
Does anyone have any questions towards Neil on the building permits?
No.
Okay, we'll
Need a motion Merlin?
Oh, maybe we do it. Motion to receive the building report. Curtis? You have a seconder?
I'll second that.
Ron? All in favor? Opposed? Let's carry. Moving on to the annual fire report. For 2019. Neil has went through and did a bunch of graphs and scenarios. Neil, is it okay if I just flip this over to you just to make any comments and then once we're done that? We can open it up to questions from council for you if that's alright?
Certainly, yeah, I was trying to come up with some comments, 2019 seems like an awful long time ago already. But, no, I hope the report is complete and and informative.
Yeah, you had lots, lots of information there Neil, it's good when I read it over on the weekend. Does anyone have any questions for Neil?
No.
No questions, seeing none, looking. Anything Glenn? Okay. Looking for a motion to receive the annual fire report. Chris? Seconder?
Tom.
Second by Tom. All in favor of? Opposed? Let's carry. Thank you Neil for your work putting this together.
Thank you.
Definitely does not go unnoticed. Alright. We're going to move on to the 2020 Water Works Inspection Report. Looking for a motion to receive the report.
I'll receive the report.
Okay, you have a seconder?
I'll second.
Second by Ron. Are there any questions in regards to the stats here? There was a couple of non-compliance ones, I think the one that I picked up on most was just the common trenching and can't really do work in progress, I guess we'll put it that way. Dan, is there anything else you want to add to that?
No, you're, you're right Mayor, the common trenching is a work in progress and it also will remain uncompliant until we no longer have any common entrenched lines, so.
Dan, do you know in general, has there been any any feedback from the switch over to SaaS water in the last, or for the first quarter, positive or negative responses?
I have not got any response whatsoever. I don't know if Jessica can speak to whether or not she had got any before I returned, but no, I don't believe I don't believe there has been any feedback that I've received.
Okay, just thought I'd ask. We never voted on that, did we? No.
We have to receive it?
Yeah. We already have the motion to receive. We just all in favor of receiving the Water Works report? Opposed? Let's carry. Alright. Moving on to rec facility survey responses. There's some really intelligent one comments down at the bottom that I noticed, but I guess we'll motion to, motion to receive and then we can talk about it if we need to.
I'll motion to receive the report.
Okay, you have a seconder?
I'll second this, okay.
Second by Glenn. Diana and/or Jessica, do you have any comments on? I guess, one question that I have, do, did we, do we know who the respondents were, like were they all from the city or was it 50, 50 from rural or? Do we know those numbers?
No, I don't believe that that was included as a question. Partially because we had individuals who were completing it as from an organization's perspective as well as from themselves. And this was really the first of what many, what we plan to have as many stakeholder engagement processes for any consideration of a new facility, so.
If, if I can add, I wouldn't put a lot of weight on a survey like this, I don't believe this is a, the faction or would be one of the key factors in deciding what would be built or where it would be built or why it would be built, it's pretty informal and the people you get responding. I've never seen an important building designed by a survey.
No, I agree with you there Glenn, it just, I think it gives a whole bunch of different ideas and comments that we can forth. Probably the, probably the one that I liked, liked the most in the comments, it was right towards the end where where was it? I just, the gist, the gist of it was make sure that we are including everyone. Which, that's something that we're going to do and not just slap things together, that's that was probably the, one of the most important comments that I found, we have to do it right the first time if we're going to do it. Does anyone else have any comments to make on? The survey, survey results?
It's gonna be our next step now. What's our next step gonna be like with what we had planned with the survey? We kind of laid it out with Robin before he left.
Well.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, we aren't at this point filling Robin's position, so I don't know how quickly the next step will come and it was also identified as one of the as one of the items that we could consider if we continue having the funding in there for doing the study for a new facility based on emergency expenses. But maybe Jessica can, can refresh my memory as to what the planned next step was. I believe that took place at budget discussion.
Yeah, I believe the next few steps were to just to do a lot more community consultation. Figure out, this was really the first step to start gauging what kinds of things the community was interested in in order to fine tune the next conversations. Both with residents in general and with specific user groups and other neighborhoods.
I think that was, that was the plan back then, but as everyone knows, this last month or so has been, has kind of turned everything upside down. I'm just from a, from a, from a business side of it, I'm thinking the, like the small business people small to medium to larger business people are all having a tough go right now. Possibly not everyone, but no one knows how long this shit's gonna last, or stuff is gonna last, pardon me, and I think if we, my personal feeling, if we proceed to the meat and potatoes of this right now, it's just gonna get shot down. Just because things are, there's so many, so many different unknowns right now.
Mayor, there is no action being taken on this right now any further, it will not be taken and until there's direction to do so and until there's a management position filled. Going to remain empty at this point, so.
Yep, and yeah, just just to echo that, just this, the COVID-19, that's, that's kind of taking precedent over everything right now. Just that's all I'm gonna say. Anyone else?
Yeah, I've got something, I think a lot of this is contingent on a rather large provincial and federal government grant. I think we should still continue to explore grants that are available and that will become the big time seed for the project when and if it does go forward without a significant funding formula from those two levels of government, you know, we're gonna have a hard time doing this. Down the road, I definitely think we still have to do the municipal infrastructure side of it, but we can talk about that plan should the other fund come in place.
Yeah, for sure, and we have applied for the only program that's available for recreation funding right now. And there is some leeway on timelines, I think even with that application, so we haven't heard anything back, but I think there'll be a more formal resolution to ensure council supports that grant application coming to the next meeting.
But let's be honest, if we get a 75% or 65% grant to support this project, we definitely have to take a look at it.
Yep, I agree with you Curtis, absolutely we do, but not, not that we have, not that we have to put this on the back burner right now, just kind of waiting for response back from the grant applications etc. But like I mentioned before, this, this COVID thing is kind of taking precedent, if you will, or everything right now. We still have to run day-to-day operations and we'll get into that a little bit further, but yeah, that's, that's where I'm sitting at.
I agree with Curtis that without the provincial or federal grants, we've got lots of time.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Okay, all in favor of receiving the rec facility survey? Opposed? And that's carried, so we'll, we'll work forward with that just as, as things move along here. The announcement of, from Premier Moe yesterday in regards to slowly working things back in if, if the trending is, is continuing on slowly but surely. It's not gonna be an overnight thing, but safety first and then getting the economy boosted back up and running, so. Okay. Council committee reports. Ron, do you have anything?
No, no, Chamber's been pretty quiet trying to get involved on the virtual meetings as well and getting some information out to the other businesses in town and trying to support each other through this. But it's been again, trying to, trying to navigate through the situation that we're in and, and everyone's doing the best they can.
Okay, anything else Ron?
Nope.
Curtis, do you have anything?
Nothing to report.
Okay, I'm just going across screen here, Conrad?
Uh, nothing to report.
Tom?
Um, I had, I've had one, two, one Lakeland Library meeting by conference call, one Zoom AGM or for the local board for the library, so anyway, right now the library is completely closed. As are all other libraries in the province except for a couple of exceptions, I think, so awaiting, same thing, waiting COVID. And hopefully a plan to open as, as they, they lift some of the restrictions, so once we, I assume, I got another conference call the morning with the Lakeland Board too, but but basically it's been all COVID stuff.
Okay. That's it Tom?
Yeah, that's it.
Okay, sounds good, thank you, Glenn?
Both the Waste Management and Rec Board are waiting for, we haven't had any meetings.
Okay. I guess that just leaves me, as Diana mentioned bi-weekly for the last three weeks and daily prior to that, I've been involved with a Zoom call with other city mayors throughout the province. Basically getting together and just chatting about what's going on within, within the communities, how they're going about doing different, different things, how they're how they're coping. Definitely like the bigger centers, Saskatoon and Regina, they have huge hits with it's, it's all in scale, but with transportation and facilities and stuff like that, they're talking multimillion dollar losses as of, as of right now, so they're lobbying to the government just to see what, what can be done to help out with that. Many different subjects, I should probably put together just a what goes on in the meeting and send it out to everyone, would, would, would you guys like that? I've been, I haven't been doing it, I, last week I kind of reached out to everyone just to, just to chat a little bit, but if, if you would prefer, I could just shoot out a quick email as to what we're talking about at, at the city mayor's caucus. Would everyone like me to do that? There's no big secrets.
Sure.
Okay, I'll, I'll try and just do a short little notes after the meetings, just fire it out to everybody just as to what, what's being talked about. And then also on the same day in the afternoon, we, we all spoke conference with Minister of Government Relations, Mr. Carr, Deputy Minister as well as the city managers and mayors from cities, SARM, SUMA, New North, they all have heavy inputs and they basically just, Minister Carr gives us an update of what's going on in the premier's office. And then field questions from city mayor's caucus that are put in prior to prior to the meeting with Minister Carr, but rather than babbling, I'll just put together some stuff and send it out to everyone, and Diana's been involved with majority of the teleconferences as well, so I know I'm missing stuff Diana, but I'm just kind of going off the top of my head here.
No, it's all good, that's the format, pretty much.
Or you got your helper with you? So yeah, that's, that's about all the different things that I've been doing lately, just lots of phone calls. So I will go get together and send something out to everyone, my apologies for not doing that as of now. There's a, one of the things they were talking about today is the construction, the PST exemption on construction from municipal stuff, that was something that was lobbied at SUMA. Tom and Glenn, you probably, I think that was one of the one of the items on the, on the list that they took to the minister, that came up today again, hoping to get it back to economic, the Minister of the Economy, I don't know, Tom, do you know that character? Trying to get it back to there to get a word from the premier to see if, something like that, if they could move forward with that to help out with some of the capital expenditures, just
Yeah, it's SUMA, the economy and finance, eh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Again, this Thursday, we've got a meeting with SaaS Health Authority in regards to the long-term care facility. Again, this Thursday, we've got a meeting with Sask Health Authority in regards to the long long term care facility. I'm sure that everyone knows, but they have broken ground out there last week. We started moving some snow. Haven't been out there for a few days, but. They're at it. And I think at our last meeting, I I shared a timeline of, I think it was eighteen months. For for the opening, so.
Yeah, Tom, here, I I looked, I took a look at that there too. I was actually surprised that. Lot of area they've cleaned off there to start working on. And that made me think about where I looked at it, that. That old SO site, Diana, as far as green space, I didn't realize it. And I don't know if that facility goes around even behind that, that they've got that area cleared off, but it might be a workspace. But anyway, I just made me think, have we had much? Correspondence or any feedback from SO yet lately about that?
No, we haven't heard anything back. I do have a contact to try to get in touch with there. But I, we haven't reached out lately.
Yeah, I don't, I know we did a bit, actually Jessica did some there not long before. Late, late fall, I think. And and then actually, right after I. We noticed they did a lot of staking on the property. There was a lot of, obviously did some work on it or some. They did some some checking or something of something. So. Not sure where they are with that, but yeah, okay. Yeah, it'd be interesting because it just. You, when you look at it, that that property is is going to be right beside it.
Yep, good point. Okay, was there anything else, any other? Anything else people had to add? Seeing none, moving on to correspondence. We have one item from Saskatchewan Construction Association, just. Basically giving a heads up that they're ready to roll and they're ensuring that their. Workers are all COVID nineteen safe and etc. You've already all read the letter. They they're just. Kind of in, in, not enforcing, but enhancing that they're going to be following all the rules and regulations and. Looking forward to proceeding with some construction for for this upcoming build year. Need a motion to receive the one item of correspondence.
I'll move to receive correspondence.
Seconder?
All second.
Glenn, yeah, Glenn?
Yes.
Do you have, all in favor? Opposed? It's carried. All right, council inquiries. This is where we have the opportunity to ask questions. Pass on goods and bads from around the community. I'm just gonna start off on my list here, Mr. Ron.
Um, I did have one question. It was. Somebody had asked if there was a way to make the walking path that lines park kind of one way traffic.
Counselor Thebeck had the same question of me, and I actually had it on the list of things to talk about at our management meeting tomorrow. Because there's a number of other communities that have done it. So we will be looking into it, but we also have a whole, like. In generally around the walking path, once the the snow is gone, there is a significant amount of space on either side. That people can move to. It's probably more of an issue as the snow is still there. So. The short answer is we're already looking into it and we can report back after.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Curtis, do you have anything? You said Curtis? Yep.
Yeah, I have one here, just about the the point of the water as we look like we're moving into some warmer temperatures, just. To me, just one of those, kind of those, the tall grass, kind of the cosmetic things of the community. Spend, I saw the the crews out today, getting getting some of the storm sewer drains. Bud, which is a, which is an excellent move. We can hit the the big spots in the city that the water is starting to find. And get that moving, that that'd be. Good for us, I think.
Okay, I did notice that both steamers were out, that was about five thirty, they're out doing culverts on the. They were over by, one group was over by the cost service center, one was by Subway. They were working by the school this morning, Carton High. And city convenience over there. So I know they are out. Doing a good job as far as I'm concerned. Any else, Curtis?
Oh, that's it.
Conrad?
No, I know it's warming up now and we're gonna get our potholes. So. I'm sure Public Works are gonna get their fair share of pot fixing them and. Probably the area I'd be most concerned with is on Center Street with, you know, a lot of the utility cuts and. A lot of the intersections or people are going around. And I know in the past we just, it's too cold for asphalt, but. Maybe a guy could take a bucket full of gravel or sand and kind of float it in some of those areas, just kind of smooth them out. That would be it.
I have seen them around with with a loader and gravel. There was a, one of the young fellows was out today putting, I don't know. Cold mix or something over by. Right across the street from your office out there. From the shop. A and W.
Yeah.
Fast gas, they were doing some patching out there with some cold mix or whatever, whatever it was. I know they are out in the boat. Uh, Tom?
No.
Glenn?
Potholes and water, and discussed.
Okay. I had one person ask me today that uses the walking path on a regular occasion. They were concerned with the amount of dog, the garbage cans being full of dog. At least it's picked up. They're not sure if the garbage cans are being dumped out there.
They are, the garbage cans were emptied twice last week and they have increased their patrols to make sure. That they're taking care of it. But typically, it would be a job they do once a week at this time of year. And they're having to do it much more frequently. So they were, all of the garbages were emptied twice last week and it would usually be a once a week kind of.
Okay, awesome. Sorry, I don't frequent the walking path very often, so I I didn't see it for myself, but I just had someone that does use it.
Yeah, there's a lot of use. I go out there quite often. There's a lot of people out there at times, you know, which is good.
Okay. All right, moving on, we have one item under old business, investment policy amendment.
I'll move the the motion that bylaw one, two, zero, two, zero. An investment policy amendment bylaw be given second reading.
Have a second for that? Second that. Run. Any comments, Conrad?
No, no comments.
Ron, do you have anything?
No, no.
Okay. All in favor of giving it a second reading? Opposed? That's carried. All right. Do we want to move this? For the third reading? Conrad, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, I'll motion that bylaw one, twenty, twenty. An investment policy amendment bylaw be read a third time and adopted.
Okay, we have a seconder. Curtis? Their comment, assertions? Okay, all in favor of? Opposed? That's carried. Thank you. All right, moving on to new business. In light of the. COVID nineteen, we have a work from home policy. Uh, sorry, just getting to there. Or a new policy that would like to be brought forward. Someone would like to bring this to the table?
All motion then again, the policy three hundred twenty, zero, zero, one, a work from home policy be adopted.
Okay, we have a seconder?
All second up.
Second by Iran? Does anyone have any comments or questions that we can ask Diana or Jessica in regards to this?
This is the last time we have to use it.
That'd be nice.
Yeah.
Hopefully, but yeah, it's in place. Diana or do you have anything to add to this?
I think it's noted already that we have been operating under this draft policy on my direction for the last couple of weeks. We did have to buy a piece of software in order to be able to accommodate staff working from home, but. As we're all aware, City Hall is not terribly big to have. Eight or nine staff working in, so. I think it's been going good so far, so. I'm with Conrad.
Okay, I'd actually like to just comment that technically. This policy is written in such a way that you could allow a work from home agreement. Under non-emergency circumstances as well. It does differentiate between the two. It's unlikely, but but it is actually accounted for in there.
Just with that comment, Jessica, sorry, just is that, is that opening something up that? People will say, I'm just gonna work from home today?
No, they don't have that option to. It still has to be approved by me if they're going to do it, so.
Okay, no, I just wanted to make sure that that we're not opening something up. Okay, all in favor of the policy as presented? Opposed? Tom, are you waving as?
I'm waving. No, no, I'm not opposed. I just a long wave.
Okay, sounds good. Uh, that's carried. Uh, next, we have a. A bylaw for. Temporary penalties amendment bylaw. Again, this kind of reflects on what's going on in the in the world now. There's some. Options and implications that are provided out here. Looking to bring this bylaw to the table tonight, and then if we do so wish, we can give it second and third. Reading tonight as well. If someone would like to bring this bylaw?
Okay, the bylaw three, twenty, twenty. A temporary penalties amendment bylaw be introduced and read a first time.
Okay, do we have a seconder for that?
All second. All right, well.
Second by Iran? So just, any comments, Conrad?
No, no comments.
This is follow up from our. Follow up from our last meeting, right?
This is a follow up from the direction given the last meeting as well after reviewing the details of what other communities are doing. Kind of did a Nash up of what places are. Doing elsewhere, which is all pretty similar.
Okay. Thank you.
And and just so everybody know where there isn't a big rush to get this adopted tonight. Um, there isn't any penalties that will be added for anything until. Long after this would be adopted at the next meeting. If there's.
This wouldn't, this wouldn't come into effect until the end of June, is that correct, Diana? Because it depend, the penalty abatement would be. Anything moving forward from whatever the first or twentieth, tenth of March or whatever the date was. So. Anything that was still outstanding from earlier in the first quarter is still due. Correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, penalties were levied on utility accounts on March first. So the way that it works is your your bill comes out, it was dated December thirty first, you have until February twenty eighth to pay it. And the penalties are levied the next day on anything outstanding. The second quarter bill is from April first until June thirty first, and you would have until the end of July. Um, to pay. End of July or the end of August to pay, and then there wouldn't be penalties till September first on utility bills.
There's bills that are going out this week that are, there's bills going out this week and last week.
Right, yes. The end of May.
Through May thirty first, and normally we would add six percent June first.
Yeah. So there's time to get this adopted before any penalties.
Okay.
So. We can move it forward to second and third meeting, or we can leave it until the next meeting, whatever. You guys would like to do. You want to move it forward, or do you want to just hang tough just in case all this COVID stuff goes away and then we don't have to worry about it?
I like your optimism, but. I think we can wait two weeks. Then.
Yeah, I think we can wait.
Okay. So we'll just bring that up at our. Next meeting in April.
Voted on this one already?
No, we voted on the on the first.
No, no, we didn't.
Moved and seconded the resolution to give first reading.
I'm sorry, all in favor of the of passing the first reading for the. Penalty amendment. Opposed? That's carried. Uh, civic center use. If someone could bring this table, then we can have a little discussion on it.
I also move that the city administrator be authorized to enter. Into an agreement with the Saskatchewan Health Authority to exclusively rent the civic center at the rate of four hundred and twenty dollars per week is. Needed for the duration of the pandemic period.
Do we have a seconder to that?
I'll second. Tom, well.
I I think I got Conrad first. Okay. Uh, Glenn, do you have anything to add?
No.
Conrad?
Have we had any conversation with the health authority regarding fees? Diana?
Yes, I did in in preliminary discussion with them, posed the fees. They had no issue with them whatsoever. I have reviewed what other places are charging. There are places that are charging more. But basically what we did is we took our hard operating costs and we figured out what it costs to run the facility on a weekly basis. And where we're trying to break even on covering those costs. They are, of course, being the health authority and the fact that there's going to be patients in there and. Uh, it's it's the new assessment and and testing site. They bring in their own infection control people. So even our caretaker is not doing any cleaning or anything like that. So we felt like it was, it was a fair number that. Offset the costs that we have for operating the facility. And they don't have an issue with the amount.
Yeah, no, just I looked at covering the costs or hard costs and that's that's great. And they they won't have any trouble with the power in there, right? Like, I know, like, at some wedding dances, maybe it's the amount of lights and stuff like that used to consistently blow breakers.
Yeah, I I don't believe they do. I haven't heard anything from them and they have been operating straight since Thursday.
I would look at it when it got, if it ever did get busy, that there may be an issue that. Might be problems, but hope not.
Okay, anything else? Um, they didn't, they did announce or. Um, they didn't, they did announce, or sorry. The premier and the chief medical officer did announce yesterday that Meadow Lake is, uh. The first assessment and test station other than Saskatoon and Regina that opened up. Uh, they is supposed to be opening theirs tomorrow. Further down the road is going to be, I believe, another twelve throughout the province, but. Kind of a, kind of a kudos or whatever to Meadow Lake being the first one as, uh, as a test assessment. Site and, uh. I believe with this site, they're going to be able to turn around, uh. The test results within four hours. There is a new test machine called the Spartan that is, I think they have. Certain number on order that will allow the test results to be found out within one hour of a test. I, I don't think that we have one of those up in Meadow Lake. I don't even think there's any in the system yet, but they are on route. So just kind of a.
Supposed to be one of the communities getting the rapid response testers.
Think they got one.
Yeah.
Oh, they do have a Spartan?
I think so.
Is outside of Sask, we were the first community outside of Saskatoon and Regina to get one of the rapid response testers.
Yeah.
But the, but that one is a like. They set a four-hour turn, like a four-hour turnover for the test results. Whereas this new Spartan thing that is, that they're just in the process of being, uh, that's a one-hour turnaround. I, I don't.
And that one is currently being approved by the federal government.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I think this, uh, this one's called next gen or next gen or something like that, uh, Gen X or something. The, the one they have here.
I think right now too, all the tests that it's doing, still got to be verified at the Roy Roman O'Lab.
My understanding is that there was the first ten tests that it did had to be verified at the lab in Regina. And after that, then it's considered, um, operational.
Yeah. Okay, any other comments in regards to civic center?
Nope.
Uh, we, we did have a phone conference, was that last week Diana with, uh, Brent Stewart? Uh, the health authority just, just talking about, about this. My one question to them was security. Uh, if there was needed to agree and he. Said not, not at this time, but, uh, I just. Have it out there saying that just to make, just to make sure. But this is all new to everyone and it, we're, we're hoping that people aren't just going to go storm this place. So. There's something else I was going to ask. Oh, Dan, our current custodian at the civic center. If we're not needing their services, is there everything okay with? What we're doing that we, or are we still having to pay them for their services even if they're not needed or how is that working?
We have to give thirty days notice by the contract and the contract was up at the end of May anyway. So the conversation with the custodian is that we're not going to be using their services, especially now that we have rented it out on an exclusive basis. To a group that will be doing their own cleaning. Um, she will not have access to it anymore. She still will be, if needed, at this point, taking care of snow removal. Knock on wood, hopefully that is done with as well. But, um, the conversation with her is that if this was still ongoing, we would not be looking to fill, uh, uh, to sign a new contract. Until, until we had an idea of when we can open the facility again. So the idea is after the end of May, we will not have a caretaker at the civic center or a custodian at the civic center. Until such a time as the facility can open.
Okay. All right, uh, all in favor of the civic center use agreement? Opposed? That's carried. Thanks Diana. Uh, next, uh, lift station tender report and awarding of the contract. Someone want to bring this one forward so we can chat? Curtis?
At the city award, the two thousand twenty lift station contract to Triple M Daylighting Limited. It's the receipt of bonds insurance W C B compliant certificate as required. The draft construction schedule and assigned post bid addendum that includes the work plans, clarifications made by the contractor in the pre-award meeting.
Okay, you have a seconder? Uh, Ron? Curtis, do you have any questions or comments?
No, I think we've followed the procedure that, that's been outlined very well by our staff, so thank you for that.
Uh, Ron, do you have anything?
Oh, no, everything looks pretty straightforward, so.
Anyone else have any questions? I just. Information wise, uh, triple, triple N daylighting, I just, I've never heard, heard of them before, so I just Googled them the other day. Uh, they're out of Debden? Am I correct Diana?
Yes, that's my understanding is they're out of Debden.
Yeah, there's, yeah, Debden and Canwood, they had two different addresses, so, but it's in that general area. And I'm assuming they, they did their, uh. Homework to make sure, I guess that's part of the, uh. Insurance and W C B and stuff like that. Is that correct? Just want to make sure because I, I was, I was looking down the list and Richie Construction, very aware of them, Kelsey Pipeline. They were, they're all fairly close, so just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, if there had been any reason to not award to the low bidder, then we would have got that advice. But there wasn't, there wasn't any justification for it down to price at the end of the day.
Okay, no, that's good. Any other comments? Okay, all in favor of the recommendation? Opposed? That's carried. Thank you. Uh, next, the recreation project application.
And I apologize, I believe I said earlier this was coming on the next meeting, but it is on tonight's meeting.
Okay, sorry, I just got to get to there. We kind of talked about this a little bit before the next steps with the. Facility. Survey and stuff like that. Someone want to bring this forward?
So we can chat? I'll do that.
Okay.
That the Meadow Lake City Council support the application for the community center and project. Under the Invest in Canada Infrastructure Program Community Recreation and Culture Stream. And that council agrees to meet legislative standards to meet the terms and conditions of the I C I P program to conduct. An open tendering process to manage the construction of the project, to fund the municipal share of the project. To fund ongoing operation and maintenance costs and to follow any. Mitigation measures as required by the Federal Impact Assessment Act and the Environmental Assessment Act, Saskatchewan.
Do we have a seconder for that, please? Conrad? Second by Conrad. Uh, Glenn, do you have anything to add? Glenn, anything to add to that?
Um, i- if we got the sixty-five cent. Support on. Every dollar we spent, I think then it would deserve a lot of consideration.
Okay. So you're saying if we don't get to sixty-five? Percent or whatever it is, then we don't move forward?
Well.
Do we look at it different avenues?
Well, then we take a look at what. What's available. This would be the first and most. Optimistic opportunity. If we could get something here, then, then everything. Uh, would change the cost dramatically. If we don't get this, then we got to take a look at what, where we go next.
Yep.
Okay, yeah, we need this in the system before we can even have that discussion anyway, so it's good. We got it in there, uh, met the deadlines and. As it moves forward, we'll have a chance to, I'm sure to. Have a lot of, a lot more discussion and actually looking at it is could be up to over seventy percent, so.
Yep. Any else? Conrad, do you have anything to add?
No, I agree with everybody's responses, so. Okay, we're going forward.
All right, all in favor of the recommendation as presented? Opposed? That's carried. Thank you very much. Uh, no, some motion, nothing, motion, nothing. Curtis?
City council moved to a closed meeting, consider the following items and matter related personnel and drop policy option, future budget matter.
Do we, do we just stay on here, uh, or do we have to? Sign up again?
You guys can just stay on here. I'm going to stop the share as soon as this resolution gets passed.
Okay.
Okay, all in favor of moving to a closed meeting?
Sorry, was there a second on that? I missed it.
Yeah, I did.
Oh, no. Conrad did. All in favor, opposed, you know, it's carried.
Wait, hang on, that wasn't the right button.